I'd like to call to order the regular session of the Hazel Park City Council meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. Roll call?
Mayor Peruzzi.
She's excused.
Mayor Proton Keaton.
Here.
Councilman McQuirro.
Here.
Councilman Webb.
Here.
Councilman Salmon.
Here.
And if you please rise with the invocation Pastor David from Landmark Church and the pledge to allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we're grateful for your favor upon the city of Hazel Park. We thank you for all the new businesses and the new jobs in our city. Thank you for the bright future for Hazel Park. We're also grateful for our city manager and his administrative team and the fine work that they are doing on our behalf. We are blessed with our mayor and city council who serve with honor and distinction. Thank you for the police and firefighters, our first responders. We're blessed with the finest departments in the area. Thank you for the chiefs, respected, that head up that department. And Father, we pray your blessings upon them. May you hide beneath the shadow of your wings. For these proceedings tonight, we ask your blessings and favor. We pray, Father, that you will give wisdom in all the discussions. And may all decisions that are made be pleasing to you. These things we ask, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I move on to the agendas. Approval of the agenda, the chairman, in a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to, Mayor Proton Keaton, I'd like to make a change. Add county commissioners' presentation just before the resolutions.
Could we do that after the resolutions, please?
We can do it.
She used to.
Okay. Support.
Sorry.
Okay, this has been a supported discussion on the motion that's been held. Any dissension to the motion? Being none, motion carries. With that change, that was a proposal to...
That was a proposal, motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agendas made and supported.
Yes.
Discussion on the motion being none, dissension to the motion being none, motion carries. That gives us a, an agenda, and we will have the presentation from Elaine Zinn, who has to leave us shortly after the presentation.
Thank you. I have double duty tonight. I have to be in Honeytown Woods because we moved meeting here. So, thank you for moving. You have a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank everybody for electing me again. I look forward to serving as your county commissioner for another two years. So, thank you. Couple of things going on in the county. There is on Small Business Saturday, two thousand sixteen, the county is also having a contest in addition to the federal, in addition to other, the American Express gift card. And people can register for Small Business Saturday Oakland County Shopper Contest by going to advantageOakland.com, or you can text 2016 to, and, and I'm going to leave this information that can be posted. And you can enter yourself by shopping local to win three prizes. Five thousand dollars is the first prize, two thousand dollars is the second, five hundred is a, the third one is five hundred dollar voucher for travel on Southwest Airlines. And I'm going to leave this, maybe you can post this in the minutes or something in the city, or put it on the city Facebook page so there's more detail. And I want to encourage people to try and get those prizes. Another thing that I talked a little bit about, and we finally voted on it, is we did a countywide PACE program, which stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy Program. And this is promoting the use of renewable energy systems and improvements to privately owned commercial property. And so, by making Oakland County a PACE district, companies, different business people can apply for special financing to help them do sustainable energy projects. And if you're interested in doing this, you can contact Lynn and Green Michigan, and they are the providers that are helping all the different organizations, frankly, throughout the state, go through the different requirements. But there, it took us literally four years to get this through, so I am thrilled that we have it. Finally, I just wanted to remind people that we did recently pass an Oakland County Open Data Policy so that you can get more information from Oakland County online at no cost. And this is for more government transparency, so just to let you know that and try it out. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It brings us to a special presentation. Go ahead.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Proton, members of council. Obviously, my name is Edward Colbacher, and I have the state honor and privilege of serving as Hazel Park's city manager. In the days before I was city manager, I had an opportunity to serve for several years on the city of Hazel Park's Police Auxiliary Unit. And I got to meet a bunch of great individuals there and served with them in our mission to assist our police department. Tonight, we're honoring two gentlemen who are joining me in the ranks of retirees from that unit. And first, I would like to bring up my good friend Lieutenant James Vowell. Come on up, Jim. And I'll read this resolution into the record. How are you?
Good.
Good to see you. A resolution honoring James Michael Vowell. Whereas Reserve Auxiliary Officer James Vowell served the Hazel Park Police Department as a volunteer member for twenty-eight years, from nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand fourteen. And whereas Reserve Auxiliary Officer James Vowell performed his duties in an honorable and faithful manner, rising to the rank of auxiliary lieutenant. And whereas Reserve slash Auxiliary Officer James Vowell generously gave of his time volunteering to help protect Hazel Park by assisting the Hazel Park Police Department. And whereas James Vowell has chosen to retire from active participation in the Police Reserve Auxiliary Unit after these many years of service, so therefore be it resolved, the Hazel Park City Council hereby honors Auxiliary Lieutenant James Michael Vowell. We thank him for his many years of service to our community. We extend to him our best wishes in all of his future endeavors.
It was a pleasure to serve this day. I enjoyed my time. Unfortunately, things happen in life. Life happens, and I was kind of backed into a corner to have to step down. I have been in communication with the captain. There may be a possibility in the future of returning, and all I can do, I'd like to do it right now, is say thank you all for the acknowledgement.
And Jim, I just want you to know, just because you got there doesn't mean you can't come back anytime. Door is open. Glad Sergeant Stephen Glenn, please. Come on, don't be bashful. Oh, my Jim. Always. Good to see you again. A resolution honoring Stephen James Glenn. Whereas Reserve Auxiliary Officer Stephen Glenn served the Hazel Park Police Department as a volunteer member for eighteen years, from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand fifteen. And whereas Reserve Auxiliary Officer Stephen Glenn performed his duties in an honorable and faithful manner, rising to the rank of auxiliary sergeant. And whereas Reserve Auxiliary Officer Stephen Glenn generously gave of his time volunteering to help protect Hazel Park by assisting the Hazel Park Police Department. And whereas Stephen Glenn has chosen to retire from active participation in the Police Reserve Auxiliary Unit after these many years, so therefore be it resolved, the Hazel Park City Council hereby honors auxiliary sergeant Stephen Glenn, and we thank him for his many years of service to our community. We extend to him our best wishes in all of his future endeavors. Steve, thank you so much for your service to our community. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And as I told Lieutenant Vowell, you know, if circumstances change in your life and you have time to come back, the unit would welcome you with open arms.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything you want to say?
As, as Jim said, it was, it was an honor, and we appreciate the acknowledgement of our service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Proton, I would also like to recognize a couple of other auxiliary officers who are in the audience, who've been actively participating with the unit for a number of years. The auxiliary captain, James Wild. Tim, how long you been in the auxiliary?
Thirty-eight years.
Thirty-eight years. Okay. And Lieutenant Mike Kraft, how long have you been in?
Thirty-one.
Okay. So, again, I served with these men. They're great individuals. They continue to serve the city of Hazel Park. I would hope that other members of the community would look at the Police Auxiliary Reserve Unit, that's what we're calling it now, we've added the reserve title to it, and think about participating in this way to help our police department. It really is a very rewarding, wonderful way to help, and I would encourage everybody to get involved that way. And again, gentlemen, thank you for your service. We appreciate you very much. Also, forgive me, Mr. Mayor Proton, but after Julie Fournier does her presentation, I have another quick presentation with the animal control officer and the volunteers.
Right now, we have a special presentation from Julie Fournier, who was the coordinator of the Hazel Park Art Fair, another resounding success. And Julie, if you would like to come up?
Hello. How are you doing?
Okay.
On behalf of all the artists, the musicians, and the attendees who came to this year's event, I have four checks that I would like to present. One, again, same as the last four years, is our fifth year, a thousand dollars to Promise Zone. And one is for eight hundred dollars to the Recreation Center, same as the other four years we've had three in a row. And we have one for two hundred dollars to the Animal Control. And we are also presenting, for the first time this year, eight hundred dollars to the Hazel Park Public Library because of the education, this foundation to having a well-functioning citizenry, democracy, and the city. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Steve, you want to get a picture?
Julie, thank you.
Julie, thank you for everything.
Here, let me get him in here because he's instrumental.
Thank you.
He's helped me so much.
Animal Control, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Hopefully next year I can do more.
And Ed has another special presentation.
Sure, I have another short presentation. If Beth Holland would come up, please, and assist me with this. As you know, the city of Hazel Park made the decision to keep and retain our own animal control facilities at a time when many other communities in Oakland County were going with the county to provide those services. I think that has been a very wise decision. We've hired an outstanding animal control officer, Justin Holland, who recently became certified through the state, and we've just, as of last week, made him full-time. And what an outstanding job that he is doing, and we're so pleased to have his services. But I want you all to know that even with the outstanding job that he's done, it would not be possible for us to maintain the shelter the way that we do without the services of a really dedicated, tremendously active and committed group of volunteers at that shelter. They are truly an inspiration in this community, and we've been joined tonight by many of them. They're very excited that we recently approved them to become a direct adoption shelter so that we can now, on our own, do a much better job of placing some of these dogs and cats with their, for our homes. So, without further ado, I will turn it over to you, if you want to say anything else, or...
Absolutely.
Sure.
Beth Holland, 305 West Milton, I don't know if I have to say that or not. I'm going to have Justin and the volunteers come up here in a minute. Ed, Ed said something really critical. Hazel Park kept local control of animal control. When everybody else around us, communities who had big bucks, went for the cheap option for Oakland County. And what that means is your, your odds of getting your pet back if they are picked up by Oakland County and returned home are very slim. Our return rate and our adoption rate right now is off the hook. And I want just under to sink in, ninety-eight percent either go home or go to a forever home. Obviously, we have accidents that happen with animals. Those are not factored into this number, and there are, there are very few court ordered. This team has been exceptional in working with the city. And even with the court cases, if it's not severe, giving these animals another opportunity. Ninety-eight percent. That would not be possible without Justin's leadership, and I'll tell you, you guys made a great choice in hiring him. September twenty-first last year, the whole place changed. Before Justin was hired, there was a group of residents that came in, did a lot of housekeeping, painting, and getting the place in order, wiped the slate clean. So, when he came in, he was able to energize the volunteers, attract new volunteers. And our current number of volunteer hours, where there's a sign-in sheet, we're over sixteen hundred so far this year. Sixteen hundred hours donated by our residents and some non-residents that come in and spend time. That does not include Dorothy Bell, who I think lives at the shelter.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure she's got a cot in the back room.
We need to recognize Dorothy, too. Her contributions have been fantastic. She is part-time, and she volunteers many hours over and above that as well. She's been a critical component of helping this animal control shelter be so successful as well. What a great team they are.
Yep. And before I call Justin, the volunteers up, I want to thank each of you. The state dropped the ball on the grant last year, and they decided not to renew it again this year. And you guys have stepped up to give us the seed money for Neuter Span, which is critical to getting these animals rehomed. And with the direct adoptions, at some point, hopefully very soon, they will pay for themselves in getting, so it's not going to come out of our pockets or your budget. And...
Everybody do this one?
Yeah, we're ready. Call Justin, the volunteers up.
Okay. Call Justin, the volunteers up.
Justin, the volunteers, come on up here.
Come on up.
It's all ladies except for Justin tonight. We do have male volunteers. I'm going to slip over here.
Mr. Mayor Proton, while they're coming up...
All over here, guys.
To be clear, though the last names are the same, Beth and Justin are not really related.
No. I would be proud to have them as a son. We're not related.
Anybody would.
Now, this is, this is Justin Holland. I think most of you've met him. He's done an outstanding job, and I want to recognize him here. And we rewarded him with full-time employment, finally, and want to tell you, boy, does he richly deserve it. Now, before Beth hands out her little trinkets that she's got for the volunteers, I want to thank each and every one of them for the outstanding job that you've all done to ensure that our animal control shelter has been successful. But there is one very special volunteer that I want to recognize, who's, well, they've all gone over and above the call of duty to help out here. This one has been very special in talking to Beth and to Justin. So, Shannon Marie LaPreece, if you would come over here, please? And I'd like to read this into the record. Whereas Shannon Marie LaPreece served the Hazel Park Animal Control Shelter as a volunteer since two thousand fifteen. And whereas Shannon Marie LaPreece has generously given up her time, contributing hundreds of hours in the past year. And whereas Shannon Marie LaPreece has performed her volunteer tasks faithfully, selflessly helping to rescue injured and abused animals, going well above and beyond the call of duty. And whereas Shannon Marie LaPreece has brought her professional expertise accruing to the shelter, dedicating her skill set to help ensure that our animals are rescued or adopted. So, therefore be it resolved, the Hazel Park City Council hereby honors Shannon Marie LaPreece, and we thank her for her many hours of service to our community. We extend to her our best wishes in all of her future endeavors. Shannon, thank you so much for everything that you've done for the shelter.
We stand back, Joe, I'm sorry.
Again, thank you all so much. I know I speak for the mayor and council, but we really, we really couldn't do without you, Jessica.
Not at all. It's very part of our shelter.
And Beth, thank you so much. You've really taken a real leadership role with this, and we're working on some ordinance changes that we hope to bring to you next month to make things even easier, to make these adoptions go. So, Beth, we couldn't do without you either, so thank you very much as well. And again, God bless you all. Thank you.
Proud to be a part of this team.
Do you want to give these checks to Mary Ann before I lose them?
We have the Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing. Approve a resolution on dispensation of the monies from the public, from the grant?
No, it's, we actually have a slight uptick, probably just over a percentage. So, it goes from seventy-nine thousand to eighty thousand, eight thirty-four, I believe is the number. I don't know. I don't write that. But nonetheless, so it's a slight uptick from last year, which was seventy-nine and some change. So, as usual, we want to put that all towards code enforcement, which is an integral part of, you know, continuing maintenance and the overall look at the community, Hazel Park. I don't think it could go to anything better.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone have any comments or questions on the block grant monies? Being none, we close the public hearing. We have the Community Development Block Grant Funds, hundred, or eighty thousand, eight thirty-four designated for code enforcement.
Mayor Proton Keaton, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Support.
And supported. Is there a discussion on the motion? Being none, dissension to the motion? Being none, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Proton, I want to thank council for approving the attached resolution. When I became city manager in two thousand two, we were getting over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in city revenue dollars. This is the first year we've had a slight uptick, I think, since I have been manager and put those monies to good use. I hope that the federal government continues to fund these important programs. There's a very bad philosophy sometimes that brews in Washington, where they think it's best to send everything to the states first and let the states allocate it. It's really not how I like to do things. I would really rather that they continue to send things directly to us. Because sometimes when things go to Lansing, something happens in Lansing, and deserving communities are not given the resources that they need, but instead those resources are allocated to other richer communities. So, I think this is the type of program that we need to make sure that we fight all that we can to keep this type of program, and that helps a city like Hazel Park very much.
Civic announcements, we will open up civic announcements. Does anybody have civic announcements for the city of Hazel Park?
Beth Holland, 305 West Milton, want to take the opportunity to remind everybody that the seventy-fifth anniversary of Hazel Park is coming up next year, and the historical commission are currently, we are working with the publisher, Ferndale Friends, and their sales team, who are out selling ads to local businesses, but businesses are not the only ones that are included. Advertising information is available on our website. I believe that Linda was going to add it to the city's Facebook page, and it should be running on cable. If there's somebody that made a difference to you, growing up in Hazel Park or in your life in Hazel Park, maybe it was a teacher or librarian, somebody that touched your wife for thirty-five dollars, you can tell them thank you, and it'll be part of history. It'll, it'll be out there forever. So, for, if anyone has a business that they would like to advertise, I'm going to put the number out there, but we're going to widely distribute this information. It's going to be two four eight eight one nine nine five six zero, and it's, Rosie Williams is the ad rep that's going to be handling this for us. So, we look forward to having this publication come out in early spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other civic announcements? Civic announcements? Civic announcements? We'll close civic announcements and open up public discussion. There any public discussion? Anyone wishing to speak? Being no public discussion, we'll close public discussion. That brings us to the consent agenda. Council, your pleasure.
I'll move approval of items one through six of the consent agenda. Support.
Motion's been made, approve items one through six of the consent agenda, and it's been supported. Discussion? Being none, is there any dissension to the motion? Being none, motion carries. Yes, there are two business licenses that were approved under the consent agenda. Is there anyone from the vape shop that wishes to say something about their business? Come right up to the podium.
How's everybody doing? Excited to thank everybody for giving us the opportunity to open a business here. Sam, very proud and raised here, so I'm very excited. Just want to thank everybody for this opportunity.
Could you mention your location and maybe ours?
Yeah, it's two four seven one five John R. Hours are Monday through Saturday, ten a.m. to nine p.m. Sunday, ten a.m. to six p.m.
Any questions?
Good luck and your success.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Is there anyone from New Century Welding and Construction? Anyone from New Century? Thank you. That brings us to administrative reports.
Mr. Mayor Proton, the administration respectfully request the approval of the attached item for updates and improvements to our information technology system. We've recently gone with a new IT service provider, the same gentleman that maintains our services in our police department. He's worked with us for a number of years. I think we will achieve greater efficiency and results with this individual, and he's recommended the following changes and upgrades. These are long overdue.
Mayor Proton, I'll make a motion to approve.
Support. Motion has been made and supported. Is there a discussion on the motion? Being none, is there dissension to the motion? Being none, the motion carries. Next, I move on the agenda, boards and commissions.
Mr. Mayor Proton?
Yes.
I would move to approve, to appoint Steve Gambert to the Hazel Park Arts Council.
The motion has been made and supported. Discussion on the motion? Being none, dissension to the motion? Being none, the motion carries. We have an appointment. Tabled items? We have none on the agenda. New business? Is there any new business to be brought to the table? Nothing? No show causes? Communications from department head?
Andy Campbell, do you have anything?
Just in case anyone doesn't bring it up, but I'm sure of what we brought up. Next week, week from today, six fifteen, lighting ceremony, Santa Claus, all that good stuff. We'll see you out there.
Beth Yessarina.
Beth Yessarina, thank you. Merry Christmas, and happy holidays. So, awesome.
Communications from city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton. I saw online that some folks were concerned about some parking violations that we had along Dequinder. We've sent code enforcement out to issue notice, to issue warnings, and we will issue violations if closed parking practices continue. We understand that it's important for people to park in a manner that does not obstruct the view so that people can turn from the streets there. So, some of those are violations of their site plan, and we will act accordingly. These are actually missed in...
These are actually misdemeanor tickets, so we'll take action if they don't correct the property.
That it?
Well, I could pontificate on the lectures of the state of third.
That's the next item on the agenda. Why did I say that? Thank you very much, city manager. Communications from city attorney?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing. Communications from mayor and council?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I am just so, so amazingly proud of our residents in Hazel Park for having turned out in large numbers, in large majority, for our two proposals that were on the ballot to make our city better. And for our school proposal that was on the ballot to fund our schools and keep them on a sound basis. And my goodness, was I pleased to see what the Arts Council was able to do and the funds that they were able to forward to the various areas of our city this evening. All in all, we do have a good, good city here, in spite of what's going on in the rest of the country. My goodness, we're doing pretty darn good. Let's just say, if you love somebody, tell them. And if you have children, hug them every day and tell them that you love them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I also like to say thank you to all the volunteers at the animal shelter. It's been a long road over the last year or so. And they selfishly give their time to protect those animals that cannot fend or take care of themselves. And it's nice to have so many people out there that can find places for them rather than going to where neighbor sister cities have done in going to Oakland County. That's been, that was something we really didn't want to do. That was really heartless to me, what they did. They don't even care as where they go or how they go there. They only try to find the homes which they should be going to, or find the people that are responsible to take care of them. At least, I know that all of you have an effort there, and I keep track of what's going on and how things are going. And it's kind of wonderful, it's wonderful to see. Thank you, once again. I also like to say, the trunk and treat looked like it was a very big success. And I think it's a wonderful program, and hopefully we're going to, we'd like to have more volunteers. I talked to city head of church, I talked to some of the leaders there that put that on. They'd like to have fill the whole Tuskegee Park all the way around next year. So, start buying some candy and get some cars out there. I think it's a great way to show that we care about our children and protect them from those weirdos out there that unfortunately, you know, live in our society. I think it's a great way to demonstrate how we want to take care of our children and protect them. I also like to say thanks to everybody that voted for the ballot initiatives. To me, it was very important that we have stability for the long haul in our community, having the staggered terms having some institutional value up here at all given times, whether it be two council people or three every four years. The two-year swing, I believe, was just too, over the past, before we were elected, it was very up and down. You didn't know what was going on, we had a big turnover, city managers in the past, in the nineties and the eighties. I think that now, with our team here, Mr. Klobuchar's team, I think things have been really steady and consistent, and we balanced our city through a very tough recession. And I believe that's our, you know, all the community, I believe, has seen that. And I think that they spoke to us by telling us, hey, we like what you've done, let's just go and keep our city stable, not just for our community, but also for our employees as well that work for the city. They have to feel secure as well. And thank you for coming out this evening, and have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Counsel, with your... Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I will also thank the voters. It shows how, big turnout, we passed the RTA, even though it didn't pass throughout the rest, but our city passed it. It's what makes Hazel Park great, all the volunteers. Twenty-eight years, and being able to, you know, retire and still thinking about coming back. And then the other two guys that are still there, they're over thirty years, that's pretty incredible. It is, again, the volunteers at the animal shelter, the volunteers everywhere, is what makes Hazel Park hum. Makes it what it's hummed and honed. And to the voters for the millage, or the proposals in the city, I look at it, it's like modernizing or updating the charter, there was a couple of things. And you have to do that every once in a while, and update it and bring it into the modern times. So, I want to thank the voters for that. How appropriate, then, have a happy Thanksgiving. We're giving thanks, have a great Thanksgiving, and see you at the lighting ceremony. Thank you.
Yes, the lighting ceremony is coming up, I'm sure we'll have a good turnout there. The animal shelter, again, what a phenomenal thing we've done with that. I think it's something that the city should be very proud of. Although, that ninety-eight percent thing, I don't know if that's quite fair, since we have, you know, our own professional groom that will purr these animals up so they will get adopted. That might be cheating a little bit, but certainly, we have the edge on everybody else. We have a lot of things to be thankful for in Hazel Park. We have the voters, we have the volunteers, and you were talking about trunk or treat, we have it, we have it all. And we have people who come out and participate in the democratic process, and I'd like to thank you all for doing so. That's all I have, counsel.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion to adjourn? Supported, discussion on the motion, do we need an executive session?
We do not need an executive session, anything that I need, I can update you on individually.
Motion's been made, and second, a discussion's been held, is there any further discussion? Being none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stay in the chair, thank you.